Edin Prairie City Council.
August 18th meeting of the Edin Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome. Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an opportunity for Edin Prairie residents to address us on issues related to Edin Prairie city business. Our meetings are generally the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium time is from approximately 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak to us at that time, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, I will open up the floor to unscheduled speakers, but if you do want to definitely speak to us, make sure you make an appointment. Open podium is not recorded or televised. Please contact the city manager's office if you have any questions. That phone number is 949-8412. We have a proclamation tonight from our Heritage Preservation Commission. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We actually will bring up our liaison to the Heritage Preservation Commission, who's going to talk a little bit about a brand-new award that starts tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council members, staff, and guests. Thanks for coming tonight. My name is Lori Creamer, and I'm the staff liaison for the Heritage Preservation Commission. And on behalf of the commission, I'm pleased to introduce the First Annual Heritage Preservation Award. We established the award to recognize individual, family, or business that has gone above and beyond their usual responsibilities to promote, preserve, rehabilitate, or restore Edin Prairie's heritage resources. The recipient of the 2015 Heritage Preservation Award is... the late Marie Wittenberg. Marie's daughters Jill and Lori will be accepting the award. You want to come up? I just wanted to read a little bit about what some of the nominees said about Marie. She...Marie lived in Edin Prairie her whole life. She was proud to be part of one of the first families to come to Edin Prairie, 1852, the Mitchell clan. There was nothing usual about Marie's dedication and passion for preserving Edin Prairie's history. Marie was very involved in the Edin Prairie Historical Society and held the office of president for 15 years. Marie was a regular contributor and columnist about historical events in the Edin Prairie news for many years. She created the Edin Prairie Historical Museum and volunteered hundreds of hours collecting and inventorying historical artifacts and worked tirelessly to ensure they were available for the public's enjoyment and appreciation. Marie also wrote several books focused on Edin Prairie pioneer days and settlers, including The Cemetery Logs, Edin Prairie Pioneers, Edin Prairie: A Brief History, and Images of Edin Prairie, which is currently sold at Barnes &amp; Noble Bookstore in Edin Prairie. So please join me in congratulating Marie Wittenberg's family, her two daughters, and all of her other friends and family that joined her tonight for her commitment and dedication to preserving Edin Prairie's history. You...go ahead.
She was a wealth of information about our community, and she always had a pleasant smile on her face and something funny to say, and so much enthusiasm for this community. So, thank you. You're from good stock. The next item that we have tonight is donations, a group of donations. In fact, the total donations to the community tonight from these four events or organizations is like $143,000. So this is really spectacular. The first item is a donation from the Hockey Association. Mr. Lotthammer?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember. This item is also tied to an item that's on consent, which is awarding a contract for the building of the dryland training area for the hockey dryland training. You've seen some photos of the aquatics dryland training. This kind of takes it to the other side of the community center, really enhances the hockey experience and also the hockey training opportunity. What we call the Ryan Schuman Memorial Rink, rink number two, as you recall, was shrunk from an Olympic sheet of ice down to an NHL sheet of ice, which allows an opportunity to insert the dryland training shooting area, and hopefully later, more fitness related to hockey and skating. We had the opportunity to work with our Edin Prairie Hockey Association to really plan and design this, but even more importantly, which you'll see here tonight, is the gift and donation from them to be able to fund this project. And so we're really happy to bring it forward to you. They have had an arrangement with TRIA, and TRIA is helping with that funding, and so there'll be naming rights associated with that for a couple dasher boards. So we will be providing that over time. But this gift will match what the contract costs are to build four shooting stations and a small, mini, practice shooting and stick handling rink. So we do have tonight Corey Townsend, along with some members of the Hockey Association, and Corey, if you wanted to come up to the podium, or others from the association. This is John Weedman from the associations.
Good evening. We'd just like to thank you for the opportunity that we could present this gift and be on your agenda tonight. And I thank Jay Lotthammer, Paul Steika, and Bob Lanzi, who they have worked extensively with us, that we could, as an association, give back to the community that's given so much to us. So we just thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful donation. And then another donation, this one from the Sampson family. Again, Mr. Lotthammer?
Yeah, this is an annual occurrence. Mrs. Sampson has donated $10,000 towards the Art Center to be used for equipment or capital improvements.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, we needed a motion on that last one.
Yes.
Could we have a motion first on the Hockey Association donation?
I would move to adopt the resolution, accepting the donation in the amount of $43,015 from the Edin Prairie Hockey Association to go towards a dryland training area in Ryan Schuman Memorial Rink Two at the Edin Prairie Community Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion regarding the Sampson family donation?
Sure. I move to adopt the resolution, accepting the donation in the amount of $10,000 from the Sampson family to go towards Art Center equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is a donation from True Friends.
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmembers, as you'll recall, several months ago, we received from Hennepin County a matching grant of $40,000. And so this is the match from True Friends. Actually, a good portion of that is coming to them through C.H. Robinson, and so that $80,000 will ultimately go to the construction of a play structure, a very accessible play structure up at Camp Edenwood. It went last night to our Heritage Preservation Commission for their comments, and coming to you in the two meetings will be the certificate of appropriateness action item. But this is the funding that would go with constructing that play structure. So 50% of it from county funds and 50% of it from donations through True Friends.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move to adopt the resolution, accepting a donation of $40,000 from True Friends toward the construction of a play structure at Camp Edenwood.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The fourth donation is Miracle Field donation and naming rights.
Yes, this might seem somewhat familiar in that when the project was announced, Lariot Companies signed on right away and was part of the presentations of checks, and you might have seen them in previous newspaper articles on who some of the funders were for this. But we are now receiving the dollars, and so this goes with a naming rights agreement for that project. Lariot will be one of the title, or will be the title sponsor for that project, and this goes towards what we acknowledged last time as some other gifts that John McCarthy and Dave Espy were here. They had mentioned that this would be coming, and we've now received the donation and entered into the naming rights agreement.
Thank you. Kathy?
Move to adopt the resolution, accepting $50,000 donation and approve naming rights agreement with Lariot Companies, Inc.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Again, thank you to these organizations, the Hockey Association, the Sampson family, True Friends slash C.H. Robinson, Lariot Companies, and the people with Miracle Field. Donations like this help us do, as a community, some of the little extra things that we would not be able to do with just tax dollars. So we just greatly, greatly appreciate how much better our community is because of all the people that will donate to us. So thank you. One more item in the kind of donations realm. I'd like to call up Jan Ayan, who you might know, former school board member, and Becky Dillstra, and I'm sorry, I did not catch your name.
Rick Johnson.
Oh, yes. Okay, and Rick, from Rotary.
From Rotary. Hi. I'm Jan Ayan, I'm president of the Morning Rotary Club, and Rick Johnson is president-elect of the Noon Rotary Club, and Becky Dillstra is secretary of the board for the Edin Prairie Morning Club. And we organized a contest, so it's Becky's idea. We had a contest. We found out that Prop needed over 1,000 cans of chicken to feed hungry families in Chanhassen and Edin Prairie during just the month of August. So we decided to challenge the Chanhassen Rotary Club to a contest. Which club could raise the most pounds of chicken per member? And the losing team's mayor would have to wear the opposing city's baseball cap. Well, we're here tonight to apologize to Mayor Nancy. We really failed you on this one. We did not win this contest. But...so you tonight must wear a baseball cap, and I believe you have it there.
I do, and I should have tried it on first. The mayor of Chanhassen dropped this off for me. It's a fitted cap, so hopefully it'll go over my head. Yeah, it does.
So there was a winner of the club, obviously, and that was Prop, and I'm going to have Becky tell you how much we did raise.
Just a quick overview. Again, they had a request for 1,030 cans between the Edin Prairie Morning Rotary, 71 members, the Edin Prairie Noon Rotary of 37 members, and Chanhassen Rotary of 40 members. We put together a total of 1,950 cans of chicken.
Wow.
So, Prop, the big winner here.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you, and this could be worse. So you're going to show what they tried. This was a true bait and switch. Jan sends me an email saying, "You're going to have to wear an Edin Prairie baseball cap or something." And then I find out later, it was going to be a chicken hat.
This was the hat that we were hoping she would wear, but she, you know...
Yeah, and I declined. And it was nice of the Chan mayor to bring me over a red cap, and I wear black and white, so I look like Edin Prairie eagles.
You're good.
Thank you for the fundraising effort, and that Prop is benefiting from your work. Thank you so much. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval. Second.
Anything to add?
Mayor, actually, an item to remove, and then an item to mention. We need to remove item M for the purchase of the playground equipment at Camp Edenwood. I know we had accepted the donation, but we'll need to come back at a future meeting for the action on the purchase of the equipment, because we next need to act on a certificate of appropriateness that was recommended by the Heritage Preservation Commission last night. So they took action last night to approve a COA, and we're going to need to do that at a future meeting, and I would like to recommend we save action on purchasing the equipment until we do that first. And then, secondly, just a note on item C with the Baker Road water tank. Between the packet and today, and what you have in the packet for the agreement for that lease on that water tower, the language has changed slightly to give the city a little bit more control over the use of our tower and how we wouldn't be responsible for any equipment, any telecommunications equipment, any interference that may occur. So we kind of tightened up that language to protect us, and I just want to note that that change was made between when the packet went out and tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
I have a councilmember report to add.
Okay, councilmember case?
I have one as well.
Okay, all right. All in favor of the agenda is amended?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of our council workshop held on July 14?
Move approval. Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion for approval of the council meeting minutes for that same date.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I would move approval for A through N minus M.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Our public hearing today, our first public hearing, is Comfort Inn of Edin Prairie. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first public hearing is a request for a site plan, review on 3.2 acres, 7740 Flying Cloud Drive. The applicant, Comfort Inn, is looking to update the exterior facade of their building. They'd like to do a few things to remove the mansard panel around the perimeter of the building, to update the color scheme to their current brand, and then some additions to their building finishes and their cornices. The material will meet the exterior building code guidelines that the city has. The plan commission first approved this 124-room, three-story hotel back in 1985. The current proposal was recommended 6-0 by the plan commission to approve to the city council, and I do believe the applicant is here to answer any questions that you may have or provide you with a brief update if necessary.
Okay. Who's the applicant?
I believe right here.
Okay, thank you. You'll give your name and where you're from.
Good evening. My name is Michael Mon. I have my own architectural firm, Michael Mon Architects, and I'll be representing the owners for the hotel at 7740 Flying Cloud Drive. Just wanted to come up and say hello. I've actually...I'll move over here and use the microphones. Is there a camera over here?
Yes. It's automatic.
I'm not sure where it is. Oh, here we go. All right. The existing building, as I said, was built in 1986, I believe, as a Hampton Inn, and it had the traditional 30-year-old Hampton Inn look, and still does to this day. The goal by the new ownership is to rebrand this from the existing Baymont Inn to a Comfort Inn. And the Choice Hotels, the parent brand of Comfort Inn, has come back to us and asked us really to de-brand the Hampton. They don't have a lot of standards of their own, but they really don't want this to look like a Hampton. So that drove the necessity for the request here. As mentioned, we're looking at taking the metal mansard roof off and set back from the existing parapet on the roof. We're looking at taking the existing rounded corners at the top of the pilasters and squaring those off, and taking this building, and there's such a high contrast between the 30-year-old brick and the white, we're looking at toning it down, redoing the color scheme of the existing stucco, and creating it to a little more warmer scheme. The addition that we're making is we are looking at really just adding a cornice at the top of the building, and it's just very simple. It's about 18 inches tall, just a stucco cornice to match the existing. It doesn't raise the parapet height. It works within the existing confines of the stucco.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Wychstrom?
I actually just have a comment.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, councilmember case?
I really have a question of staff, or maybe Mr. Getcho, but what is it about this proposal that triggers this review? I mean, clearly, a building could paint, or it could recite, or do something, but what is it that has triggered this to be brought before us?
I'll turn it over to our city planner, Julie Kleeman.
Members of the council, the reason that staff brought this particular application forward for your review is because at the time that the application was reviewed in 1985, there was significant discussion about this being a key intersection, a key area for visual impact to the city, and based on that conversation and the recent conversations that the council has had about the design standards and wanting an opportunity to review these types of things, staff decided to bring this forward for your review and comment.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Wychstrom?
Yes, I'm very pleased with this, and it's exactly what we were talking about in a workshop just before this meeting, and that is that our goal is to have this sort of timeliness in our community where there's not...things are not just so dated, but more this sense of flow, and this helps by coming in and re-updating it, let's say. I think it's a very fine plan.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address the council on this issue? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
Move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for site plan review on 3.2 acres.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next public hearing is for Wand Corporation. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That is correct. We have a request for a planned unit district review with waivers on 2.8 acres, zoning district amendment within the I-2 industrial park zoning district as well. Wand Corporation currently has its headquarters located in the building on 7605 Corporate Way, and they're proposing to retain that facility for warehousing, but then move their headquarters to a new location at the end of that block at 7575 Corporate Way, and the property there is Zoned Industrial Park I-2, which allows for office uses up to 50% of the property. And in 1982, the property received a variance to allow a 77% use. In this particular case, the applicant is asking for 100% office use of that particular building, and you can see in the application that the...there was quite a bit of discussion about parking and the request that the waiver for office also include a continuation, a transferable requirement related to parking. And so we are proposing and recommending the waiver to allow the 100% office use with the conditions related to parking, also a waiver to exceed the amount of impervious surface within the shore land area, and in this case, the parking is already constructed on the site, which exceeds that requirement. The planning commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval of this project at their July 27th meeting, and it's my understanding that Wand, the applicant, is here tonight to provide a brief presentation for you regarding their proposal, and then staff, and they can answer any questions that you may have regarding their new project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Dave Perle, and I'm president of Wand Corporation. I'm here to give you a little bit of background about the organization tonight and kind of give you some understanding of what we're looking to do here with our new corporate headquarters. So, a little history on Wand. Wand was founded in 1982 by my father, John Perle, Sr. We build restaurant technology for fast-food restaurants. A lot of our major customers, you can see on the screen, Wendy's, Church's Chicken, Auntie Anne, so a lot of places, nationwide brands. We service over 50 in total. Three of our major technology products are digital menu boards, point-of-sale solutions, and then back-office solutions for these restaurants. We employ over 104 people, manage over 3,500 stores across the United States and across the world, so we're in about 22 countries as well. And we've been long-term members of Edin Prairie and the business community here since 2003, when we purchased that building, and we had two prior building leases in our history. So we've been in Edin Prairie for quite some time. We're very bullish on the future in terms of the organization, where we're looking to go. A lot of things are changing in restaurants, particularly as it comes to technology and adoption. So we're looking to grow to about $20 million in revenue here in 2016. One of the big things that really fuels our growth is talent, and we need to be able to attract, retain, and develop great people from across the state, from across the region, and really gets back to our culture, to our teams, and to having a great place to work. We did receive one of the Top Workplaces Award in 2014. We're very proud of that, and we're looking to continue that as we continue to grow the organization. Obviously, one of the key pieces of that is our facilities and the environment with which our people work. So what attracts us so much to 7575 Corporate Way is it's kind of a unique building. It's on a golf course, so there's lots of natural views, lots of natural settings that you don't find in a lot of industrial parks. It's got some great glass lines, really enveloping the entire building. It allows our employees to really get natural daylight, maybe not on a day like today, but most sunny Minnesota days, you know, the team would really appreciate that. It's located literally about a block away from our current facilities, and so we're going to be maintaining a warehouse presence there going forward. It doesn't impact any of our employees' commutes. It doesn't change anything in regards to that, so that's a big positive. We're able to make the remodels and really change it to fit our needs here going forward. And fifth, it's really in that sweet spot in terms of size, in that it's large enough to accommodate our five-year growth plan, but not too small where we're going to be constrained. So our vision for what we want to make this building is a very open, very collaborative type of arena. We deal with a lot of software engineers, a lot of creative resources, a lot of technical support folks, admin, sales, and marketing, people that get a lot of value out of working together. So we're planning on creating a lot of open areas, leveraging technology as best we can. Two key things we want to build into it, and one is an employee recreation area, what we're going to call our Rockstar Lounge. That's a place where employees can go relax, collaborate, play pinball, play foosball, get some work done on the side. And then a digital kitchen, which is where we have our technical showcase. That's where we can showcase off our products and services as we bring our customers into town and kind of show them what we do and how their technologies work in their restaurant. So what we're seeking and what we've submitted the PUD here to you tonight is that we want to make it 100% office use. We're planning on removing the entire warehouse facilities that are in there today. It's warehouse, quote-unquote, but it's got low ceilings, there's no truck dock, and it's really not set up in such a way that it's going to be very conducive to warehouse use, unlike our other facility at 7605, which has all of those things. The parking, as was mentioned, we do have the ability to park our employees as we see it today, along with our growth. We do some things with us where we have a 24-by-7 technical assistance center, so we have different shifts. We do some remote employees. We have employees in other states as well, and so as we continue to grow, we believe that will not be a challenge. However, if it is, we do also have a proof-of-parking plan to park up to 119 stalls in the facility without impacting wetlands, the shore lands, or any of the other areas that are off limits to us. We are looking to make it transferable also, as was mentioned. That's pretty key to us, just to put in the amount of capital and the investment to justify that, that down the road, if, you know, Wand needs to move out due to growth, that we can transfer this to another user that has similar needs to Wand and also can park it, obviously. And we think it's a win-win both for Edin Prairie and for Wand. It allows us to stay here. You know, we've kind of been challenged in terms of finding an adequate site for our growth, so we're very excited about this, and obviously, it maintains Wand here in the Edin Prairie area, builds the tax base, and allows a growing, thriving technology company. So we respectfully submit and ask you to approve the PUD, and we're hopeful for a positive outcome tonight. So, and I like your hat very much.
Do you live in Chanhassen?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, I don't live...my nephews play at Chanhassen, so they appreciate it, too.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Perle?
I have one, and that is related to parking, because I've driven down Corporate Way several times doing business visits and such, and there's so much parking on the street that it's almost dangerous, because the lane...the streets were not made for parking on both sides, and there are cars parked there. Are your employees that are currently parking on the street responsible for most of that? So will all of that move to this new location?
I would say no, and the reason I say that is I normally get to the office very early in the morning, and the cars are already parked, and they're already on the street. I know traditionally, we have had some of our employees parking on the street, but not to the point where it is today. It has definitely gotten more severe. Obviously, anyone that was previously parking on the street, that will no longer be a challenge because we'll be adding, you know, all these parking spots at the new facility. But I think there's other challenges there, separate from what Wand is doing.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then another question I have, which is for staff. So this is an industrial area. We're going to be allowing it to, if we pass this, allow it to be used as office, but that's temporary, correct? If Wand were to move out to a bigger site, because you're going to grow so much, hopefully...
Good problem.
It would still be industrial, correct?
Members of the council, the zoning is proposed to remain in place. The PUD waiver would allow the increased office use within the industrial zoning district.
Okay.
And the language that's before you this evening...
And the language that's before you this evening would allow it to be transferable if a subsequent owner demonstrated parking needs similar to what Wond has for their business.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for the proponent or staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on Wond Corporation's plans?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district review within the industrial park I-2 zoning district on 2.88 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and any subsequent council conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I just want to say, I hope staff will look into that issue on Corporate Way. I mean, it is kind of a, you know, a little cul-de-sac, and we could ignore it, but I think it is a problem, safety-wise, all that parking.
And my comment, Mayor, is, you know, we've been aware of that because I was, you know, on those same business visits with you, and it's something that we've been kind of asking some of those businesses about. So we're gonna, we're gonna have to keep looking into it.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a first reading of an ordinance amending the city code related to transit-oriented development. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This, the discussion of a TOD or Transit-Oriented Development Ordinance is something we've been talking about throughout the year, and we were able to receive a grant to fund some research into the development of a potential ordinance. So tonight, staff would like to provide a presentation to you on a potential TOD ordinance and present it for first reading this evening. So I can turn it over to Julie Kleemo once again.
Members of the council, this evening, we have the draft ordinance before you. It is a ordinance that has been through extensive outreach to external stakeholders and internal with regard to Planning Commission, City Council, and Conservation Commission. But before I dive into the discussion about what the specifics are of the ordinance, I just wanted to have a broader conversation about the Southwest Green Line LRT. And the Southwest Green Line LRT is really what prompted the conversation about a proposed TOD ordinance. The LRT line is proposed to stretch from Minneapolis through St. Louis Park, Hopkins, Minnetonka, and out to Eden Prairie. And as you're aware, there have been some recent changes to the LRT line with the deferral of the Southwest Station and the, or excuse me, deferral of Town Center Station and terminating at Southwest Station. And those issues will be part of the municipal consent plans that will be before you later in September for your review and comment. The investment framework is a document that the Southwest, or excuse me, Hennepin County Community Works collaborated with all of the communities along the Southwest LRT line in order to inform some of the preliminary engineering that goes along with the Southwest LRT line. And the most direct connection to the investment framework, or between the investment framework and the TOD ordinance, is that the investment framework identified the 10-minute walk shed for the individual station areas, all of them along the line. So in the following slides, we will take a look at what that 10-minute walk shed looks like for all of the five station areas that were originally planned for Eden Prairie so that it can give you an idea of the general area that the TOD ordinance is intended to be applied or has the potential to be applied in the future. And at this point, I'd just like to remind the council that the information before you this evening is the ordinance only. It is not the comprehensive plan guiding of parcels or the mapping rezoning of specific parcels. So it is the language that would regulate development through the TOD ordinance. The TOD ordinance really gets to the physical form of development around those station areas within the Eden Prairie community. So the first station, when you enter the LRT into the Eden Prairie community, is the City West Station. So you can tell by this visual, the area that is bound in green is the 10-minute walk shed area. The TOD ordinance generally would be applicable within that 10-minute walk shed. Moving through the community, the Golden Triangle Station is the next station area as well, again bounded by the green, you'll find the 10-minute walk shed area. Again, the discussion about whether or not individual parcels would be guided and rezoned is a subsequent conversation that will happen in the future, and there will be additional research done to support that, those recommendations that the council will have an opportunity to review and weigh in on in the future. The Town Center Station, as I mentioned, is a station that is proposed to be deferred with the municipal consent plans. And this is a station, or an area, rather, that the staff and Planning Commission had significant discussions about, because as you're aware, there's the major center area study and town center design guidelines that are already in place that really guide the character of what the town center is intended to be. So through the discussions, staff and Planning Commission arrived at the recommendation that in this particular case, it made more sense to continue to apply the town center designation and guidelines and maybe tweak those regulations a bit to emulate some of the provisions that are proposed in the TOD, or TOD, excuse me, such as bike parking or landscaping improvements. So those would be things that would be coming forward to the city council if you take positive action, and direct staff to move forward on that in the future. And then the next station, of course, is Southwest Station, has, consistent with the other slides, the green outlines the 10-minute walk shed. And then lastly is Mitchell Station. And this was included in the presentation this evening, because again, as I said, we're not looking at individual parcels, but looking at the overall regulations that would shape the physical development of TOD areas. And in the event that Mitchell Station somehow is constructed at some point in the future, this would be an area that possibly could be impacted by the TOD ordinance. So why, why is the city considering a TOD ordinance? And as I said earlier, it's primarily prompted by the LRT project that is moving forward, and the city wanted to be proactive in anticipating that significant infrastructure improvement and be proactive to identify the type of development that could occur around these station areas, creating that compact and complete and connected environment that provides a mix of uses and positively impacts the overall area of the community. As Mr. Getchow mentioned, the city did receive a grant from the Metropolitan Council to work on the preparation and creation of a TOD ordinance. And as I said, there was stakeholder outreach fairly significant that has occurred through the process. As you can see by this slide, there was a kickoff meeting. There have been individual meetings with stakeholders throughout the process, vetting several versions of the TOD ordinance and identifying issues and concerns that they have, and I'll speak to some more specifically a little later in the presentation. Also outreach to the government committee with the Chamber, Planning Commission, Conservation Commission, and also at the council workshop. So the draft ordinance incorporates several different discussions. For instance, it talks about development standards and building standards, parking requirements, as well as pedestrian and bike facility standards, landscaping and open space standards. And also, staff anticipates that there will be some supplemental analysis or study that occurs when we get to the point where we're looking at which parcels does it really make sense to apply this ordinance to. And we would envision that information coming forward to you through the comp plan review process specific to the TOD, as well as through any zoning changes that may be proposed as a part of that. So I wanted to spend a little time talking about the three sub-districts that are identified in the TOD ordinance. The first sub-district is a mixed-use district, and this district is really intended to allow a higher-density vertical mixed-use building that has ground-floor retail or hotel services, restaurants, and provides a connection to that pedestrian, pedestrian environment. So for instance, the regulations before you this evening include transparency and visibility requirements to create that eyes-on-the-street feel and really promote that active pedestrian area. The second sub-district is the TOD residential district. This district is intended to provide a high-density residential housing opportunity and also allow limited ground-floor retail services such as restaurants and other civic uses that might be a convenience or an amenity to the area. As you can see by some of these examples, it is stacked, high-density housing that can incorporate a variety of different design features. And the last sub-district that the TOD contemplates is the TOD employment. This sub-district is to allow a mix of office and light industrial and institutional uses at a density that can support the transit services and also some limited retail services that would be available to the employees within that specific area. The building standards that are proposed as a part of the TOD ordinance are a bit different than you'll see in the traditional zoning districts, but are very similar to what you see in the design standards for the town center area. So again, it talks about that high-density development. It moves the buildings closer to the street to create that active pedestrian environment, provides provisions for structured parking or parking around the back of buildings so that you're not seeing surface lots, surface lots, excuse me, right on the street. It also provides that buildings over a certain height are required to step back so that you don't have just that flat front extending from the foundation all the way to the roof line, as well as providing, as I talked about earlier, the transparency along the street and articulation, a topic that we talked about earlier this evening in the workshop. There are provisions in the code that would allow for articulation in the wall deviations and primary entrances and things of that sort. Again, similar to what we discussed in the work session earlier this evening, there are some updated landscaping and open space requirements proposed with the TOD, specifically allowing credit for perennials and planters. Green roofs could be counted towards landscape requirements if that was something that was proposed as a part of a development. It also, the draft language before you this evening also leans on the provisions in the town center ordinance in talking about pervious area on the site and requiring certain amounts of that to incorporate landscaping into the development. And then something new and unique to the TOD area is the provision of bicycle parking. Currently, code does not provide for bicycle parking requirements, and that is something that is proposed as a part of the TOD with an eye towards the multimodal commuter. So this is an item that during our outreach, we've received multiple comments back from stakeholders based on the calculations that were provided in the ordinance that it seemed a bit aggressive. So staff took the opportunity to take a couple of parcels, specifically Liberty Plaza was the most recent one, as you recall. Liberty Plaza over on Flying Cloud Drive and West 70th Street was approved back in 2007, and we used that as a test case to determine how much bike parking would be required on-site. And after we did that analysis, it did appear that the standards were a bit higher than what was a little realistic, given this point in history. So staff did revise the calculations, if you will, for bike parking requirements, as well as allowing up to 50% of the bike parking requirements to be provided in proof-of-parking. So next steps on this, should the council take action on this this evening, is to address some of the text amendments, and I want to spend a little bit of time talking about that, because in the outreach that we've done to the stakeholders, stakeholders have expressed a variety of concerns, but there are some common themes in those concerns. Primarily, there is a concern about creating non-conformities within the, proposing a change to that zoning district. So staff has been communicating with stakeholders that have that concern, that there will be multiple opportunities to address that in the future. As I said, we expect to come forward with an analysis regarding the comprehensive plan language, as well as guiding and rezoning. So whether that happens through a discussion about, does it make sense for this parcel to be in TOD or not in TOD, or maybe there's specific language included in the comprehensive plan that talks about if a development meets these criteria, such as having a PUD approval or something of that sort, and it wouldn't necessarily trigger a rezoning to the TOD, or there's always the possibility that a property owner could come in at the time of TOD rezoning and ask for waivers in order to receive approval consistent with what their development is on the ground. In addition, through the test case scenarios that we have been working on, we've identified an additional change that staff is hoping to continue to work on between first and second reading of the TOD, and that specifically is to define a net calculation. So when we use the Liberty Plaza as a test case in calculating landscaping requirements and floor area ratios, because some of our properties within Eden Prairie are rich in natural resources and have significant wetlands, or have steep slopes, or have non-standard drainage and utility easements, staff is proposing to take a look at providing a net calculation to remove those areas from the calculation in order to create more reasonable standards for landscaping and FAR, once you calculate the actual developable area of a property. So in addition to taking a look at that, we have also had some staff discussions about creating a streamline process, if you will, to the PUD and site plan review process. So for instance, right now, code talks about that any amendments to the PUD and site plan review require Planning Commission and City Council review. Through the stakeholder outreach, we've heard from the stakeholders that that additional public process can sometimes make or break a deal on, on their end of the spectrum. So staff is proposing to, or considering, rather, to come forward with some language that would identify different categories of improvement. So say, for instance, a parking lot were to be reconfigured, but still maintain all of the requirements, that that could possibly be something that would be reviewed administratively. But then if you were looking at any changes, either additions or reductions to a building up to 10%, either requiring waivers or not, possibly that could come forward straight to City Council for your review. And then anything beyond that 10% would require the full Planning Commission and City Council review process. So we'd like some feedback from the council on that as to whether or not that seems like a logical discussion to pursue. And then additionally, there are other chapters in the city code with regard to design standards such as loading facilities, or signage, or lighting that may need to be tweaked in order to provide for any inconsistencies between the TOD ordinance and the zoning ordinance overall. So staff would be looking to take a look at those, just to make sure that everything aligns and is clearly identified, both for staff, the council, and users within the community. And as I mentioned earlier, of course, following up with the comprehensive guide plan language, the mapping, and the analysis that will go along with that, as well as rezonings in the future. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Councilmember Aho.
Okay, Julie, thanks for the presentation. You're very thorough. I do have, let's kind of, just kind of go over an example. So we've got some new buildings in Eden Prairie that would fall in some of these areas. You've got Windsor Plaza is a pretty new facility that would fall into that. I realize that's kind of the town center one that we're not going to do, but you've got United Health Group, and that's, that big campus, I would think, you know, that's going to fall into your, your TOD category. So how, how would this code change, impact or not impact them, those kind of properties specifically? If you can just kind of give us, kind of walk us through maybe a brief example of that, that would be helpful.
So if an, if an existing development were proposed for regiding and rezoning to TOD, and I would expect that the, the first analysis that would occur would be to identify areas where the existing development does not meet the requirements outlined in the TOD. And of course, the TOD ordinance includes language with regard to the non-conforming law that is in state statute, and property owners are afforded pretty extensive protections under that non-conforming law. They can continue to operate as they are. However, new requirements would not be triggered unless and until they expand or enlarge their structure. So taking, for instance, United Health Group, if they were to come in and identify that these are the waivers that we would be requesting as a part of the PUD and that it were to be approved by the city council, they would at no point fall into a non-conforming status once that TOD ordinance was in place. As I said, the ordinance itself does not trigger that. It would have to be the rezoning, as well as the comp plan guiding at that point. But when they knew that that was moving forward, they could come in with a PUD amendment to address those waivers. Again... Again, there are multiple opportunities for property owners to be involved in the conversation about what does that comp plan language look like, and then also, does it make sense for this property to even be in the TOD, or does it not? And those conversations will all be coming forward through the planning commission and city council as well for your comment and review.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
You had said that you were going to double-check, like, for signs and things. Eden Prairie's always been pretty particular about its sign size ordinances, much more so than perhaps some other communities in the Twin Cities. And can we be assured that, you know, we're not talking about signs a great deal larger than our current sign ordinance, or maybe no larger than our current sign ordinance? I know we reviewed it recently, so that some big buildings can have more proportional signage, but I would hate to see this completely changing the looks of significant parts of our town because we're suddenly going to the signs that some other community might have.
Members of the council, right now, the way our zoning ordinance is set up, it identifies zoning, or excuse me, signage requirements based on zone. So because the TOD ordinance has not been established yet, of course, the TOD is not listed as a zone with specific requirements. So staff would anticipate going back into the code and identifying, listing the TOD as an ordinance, but then also identifying specific characteristics of the sign requirements for the TOD and town center areas, because those areas do have a unique flavor and feel to them, and having that reflected in the sign language that would go through a public process of the planning commission and city council, so you'd have an opportunity, again, to review and comment on that in the future.
Anybody else? I have quite a few questions. Should, if Southwest LRT were not planned for the Southwest Transit Center site, if there were no LRT, would you still be considering that Southwest Transit, this is the bus service site, as a possible TOD site? I mean, I guess my point is, it's not just LRT, are we also talking about any transit center?
Correct. It is certainly, the Transit Oriented Development Ordinance is intended to support the investments that would be made around infrastructure relative to mass transit, so it certainly could be applied at Southwest Station even if it remained a bus station only and not an LRT area.
Okay. And then can you address a little bit more the bike facility? And you said you trimmed down the requirements, but I don't know what's a reasonable amount. I mean, what, you said you studied Liberty Plaza to see what might be reasonable. I mean, because we want it, we want there to be enough bike parking to encourage bike parking and encourage biking, so we don't want to err on the side of too conservative.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so in taking a look at the requirements, what is in the code right now, or the proposed in the code right now, talks about a minimum number of parking spaces, and then an additional increment of spaces based on the gross floor area of a property. So not only did staff look at Liberty Plaza, we also looked at City Center as an example and a few others. And in doing those calculations, it became, as I said earlier, a bit aggressive in the amount of parking. It seemed unrealistic that, at this point, or even in the foreseeable future, that there would be that many bicycle commuters coming to those areas. So based on that analysis, staff did fine-tune that language a little bit, based on that review and the stakeholder information, or comments that were provided, rather. As I said earlier, there's an opportunity to provide proof of parking for bikes, if that is something that an individual property is concerned about, as well as, you know, once, in the event that this ordinance becomes operational, there's always the opportunity to come back and address things that aren't necessarily working the way we would want them to. So if we find that we're not requiring enough parking, certainly staff could come forward at council's direction, or planning commission request with a revision to that requirement as well.
Thank you. This is one of those cases where I wish I had hard copy of this document, because I think it'd be a lot easier to follow. But if you have a TOD mixed-use development, and so let's say you have restaurants in there, you have some office, you have apartments up above, so how do you use this formula that you have on page, I don't know, it's subdivision seven B, where it says, "Office, minimum of 10 spaces, plus one per 75 under square feet"? How do you implement it if you have multiple uses?
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, that would be calculated based on what the specific uses are within a building. So for instance, if it's a mixed use and it provides residential, there is a calculation for residential, as well as if there were some, you know, I don't know, a candy store down on the ground floor and a restaurant. You would calculate those based on use and come to a cumulative total that would be required for that site. And as you can see on the next page of the ordinance, there's also a provision that if it is a multi-tenant type of situation, that rather than individual users providing two or three or four bike parking stalls, that they can work collaboratively to provide a shared parking area.
Okay, so if you get into the location issue, it says bicycle parking should be located within 50 feet of the primary building entrance. Okay, so let's say you're a restaurant. We want to encourage perhaps patio dining outside the restaurant. How do you mesh that if you have to have bike parking within 50 feet?
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, that is something that staff would work with the applicant on through the PUD review process. If you'll note earlier in the ordinance, it talks about that any development in the TOD ordinance would require PUD review. So there'd be an opportunity for staff to work with the property owner or developer, as well as planning commission and city council to weigh in and influence that if there were specific concerns about that item.
Okay, and then you also talked about how you're pulling buildings closer to the street, but would you address a little bit the sidewalk widths? Because we want to encourage walkers, runners, people with strollers, bicyclists, patio, outdoor dining, tables, how wide is it going to be? Yeah, trees, landscaping, what is the setback requirement?
The setback requirements are specific to each individual sub-district, and there is specific language built in that there are maximums, which is something that's different than the traditional zoning districts citywide. So for instance, in some of the districts, it's a 20-foot maximum, however, that could be increased if outdoor seating is provided, because the intent is certainly not to encumber those public rights away of sidewalks with the outdoor seating, because those are intended to remain free and clear for the pedestrian movements that, you know, we really hope to create through these high-density areas.
Okay. And then there's no provision for public art, correct, in this?
That is correct. There is not language in this ordinance about public art. As you recall from the work session this evening, we did talk about that specifically, and that's something that staff is continuing to work on as an initiative to figure out the best way to address that citywide and address the council's desires with regard to public art.
Okay, with the mixed use, again, are there requirements of public space, perhaps behind the building, green space on the ground, not green roofs, but on the ground, green space?
There is green space, or usable open space is the term that's used in the ordinance, and it identifies, I believe it's four or five different types, whether it's a plaza or, I apologize, I'm, in the moment, I'm not recalling them right off the top of my head, but there are four or five different types of areas that could be provided, and they're intended to provide access not only to the tenants of that building, but also invite folks off of that pedestrian environment and enjoy the open space, because there may be public art, there may be landscaping to provide a relief in the more urban type of environment.
And then could you address a little bit about, what would happen if we didn't do a TOD ordinance? What would that look like? Is there any way in which that could be greatly beneficial to us? Also, I kind of also want to know what is, what is in having the TOD ordinance? What's in it for us as a city? We're taking land that maybe in the past had a warehouse on it with, you know, 60 feet of green space in front of it, and we're allowing much more dense development on the property. And what are we, in exchange, getting as a city? It seems like, I don't know if it's correct, and the developers in the audience would know better, but it seems to me like we're creating a lot more value in that land, perhaps? So other than, you know, future tax revenue, but I mean, what is in it for us as a city?
With the TOD ordinance being in place, it creates an opportunity for the city to influence the physical form of that development that is likely to occur based on history of the development of other LRT areas throughout the country. You see the investment that's made in the infrastructure, and then property values will rise, which causes property owners to take a look at, what's the highest and best use of my property? And once they take a look at that, and they take a look at what City of Eden Prairie's current ordinance allows with regard to a single-story warehouse facilities, they're not able to capture that investment. So they're really looking to maximize the highest and best use of their property, and by being proactive and being in front of that, the City of Eden Prairie has an opportunity to guide that, rather than be in a reactionary mode, as those changes are likely to occur once the LRT line is constructed.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, one thing just occurred to me when you were talking about various varieties of green or public space. Since we are starting to talk about high-density residential in here, can we, I don't know that this does make provision for it, but oftentimes, children are discouraged in areas that don't have any park facilities for them. You know, if your open space is all plaza, and you're in fact doing a large apartment building or something, is there any provision for this, that some of this match with the expected tenants? And I'd hate to see that, you know, all high-density residential buildings are viewed as adult-only. You know, in truth, you need room for families as well, and not just one or two-bedroom apartments. So is there anything in here that would make sure that families with children don't get discriminated against in the residential because of the open space?
There is a provision in the usable open space areas. I talked about there were four or five different identified types of open space, and one of those is, includes a play area, which is defined as an open space designed and equipped for the recreation of children. It goes on to provide additional detail about what can happen, or what is anticipated to happen within that area, but it is specifically guided towards that particular need.
Excellent. That's interesting that you bring that up, Councilmember Nelson, because it strikes me that, you know, even though we don't directly do what we think the school district would want us to do, I think we should be cognizant of the fact that we're looking at a possible TOD zoning in the Golden Triangle, an area that has traditionally not been residential. And that has ramifications for the school district in terms of needing to suddenly get buses in there. That's kind of a big deal. So I hope that when we do these TOD, when we apply these TOD zones, we can apply different types to different areas, correct?
As a part of the upcoming conversation with regard to the comp plan, staff's intent or thought process at this point is to propose language for the comprehensive plan that identifies the character of each of the individual station areas. So talking about the Golden Triangle is an area that is likely to promote X, Y, or Z type of development, and reflecting that in the language that is in the comprehensive plan, and then guiding the general area for TOD, but leaving the language to really lend itself to what type of sub-district, excuse me, is appropriate for what parcels and in what proximity to the station area, surrounding land uses, things of that sort. So I would anticipate that that type of language would be coming forward to you through the comp plan process.
Okay. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this TOD ordinance? Thank you. If you'll come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Bill Griffith, representing Evine Live, which you may know as Shop NBC, that's their former name, on Shady Oak Road. Very good discussion tonight, and I want to first thank your staff for their accessibility. I came to the discussion rather late, as sometimes is the case, and they made themselves available to me, provided information, provided the investment framework and other materials that I needed to properly analyze the impact on our client's property. So I thank them for that. I also think, obviously, that it's a laudable public goal to come up with an investment framework and a regulatory framework that maximizes the return on the public investment. I think where it becomes difficult, as some of your comments have suggested, is when you start to apply that to a built environment. And we've got one-story office warehouse buildings in the area, some two-stories, but there's not much greater development than that in the area that I'm referring to, and I think it's been described as the Golden Triangle. And so I think the consideration that we would put before you as one of the stakeholders, probably in line with several other comments, is that the real critical thing for those property owners is the transition of the area. And so what is the mechanism by which you get from today's land use and form and density to tomorrow's? And we've had this conversation in several other cities, so this is obviously not a new question. I think the APA conference in Brainerd is going to discuss this, or no, Migi, is going to discuss this further, maybe your staff will be involved. But the point is, other cities have wrestled with this and come up with solutions to what is essentially a pretty significant challenge. And I can think of, in my career, a half a dozen times, maybe more, when I've been asked to analyze the impact of your existing regulations in the Golden Triangle and elsewhere on investment in property, investments that you never see as a city, because they're done on a conforming basis, a permitted-use basis, but we're asked to analyze the effect and impact of your regulations. Now, so if you can imagine a TOD overlay on top of what is essentially a one-story or two-story commercial industrial building, we would have to say, potentially, this is non-conforming. And what does that mean? You can say that waivers can be granted, PUD process can be had and made use of, but essentially, if someone's looking to invest in your community as an outside investor, and they find out through our analysis or others that it's going to be perhaps a six-month process before we really know whether you'll be labeled non-conforming, whether that would lead to some disinvestment in property, that potential institutional buyer or investor may go elsewhere. And I tell you that because that's been my experience over many, many years. Those things may never come to the city, and yet you may have an impact that is not what you intended. So I think the staff has certainly, has presented opportunities for flexibility. From my standpoint, the best type of flexibility is the flexibility that's granted, really is a matter of right, and so there isn't a question about whether there'll be a long and lengthy process. Even a streamlined process could lead to potential disinvestment. So the best type of flexibility is one that's proactive, and staff has already alluded to that with the concept that there may be a triggering event before the TOD regulations apply. That would be terrific. If we don't bring forward a redevelopment plan, a PUD request, then maybe those regulations are yet not applied to our property. And then they don't get, those properties don't get labeled non-conforming. There's been made reference to the state statute, which is a good statute from a property owner's standpoint, but you still have that stigma of non-conforming. And when appraisers look at property that's described as non-conforming by city government, the question they ask is, what is the cost to cure? What is the cost to cure the non-conformity? If the cost is, you have to tear down your building, put up structured parking, build a two-story building, 50% articulated front, well, that's an insurmountable cost, and it leads to actually disinvestment rather than investment. Now, there are proven ways to address this, and your city is as sophisticated as others, and I know you'll get there, but we wanted, at this point, when there's still perhaps a year or more to rezoning, we wanted to make sure that those comments were made on the record. Everything that I'm hearing from your staff, the questions you're asking signal that you're moving in that direction, but we're happy to help and certainly will be engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to address the council? Okay, council?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and approve first reading of the Transit Oriented Development Ordinance, and direct staff to begin preparing associated amendments to the other sections of Chapter 11, including the Town Center Ordinance, Site Plan, and Architectural Design Review Ordinance, and Planned Unit Development Ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Councilmember Aho.
You know, I think after the last speaker's comments, I think it is really important that we make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences of our action that would prohibit or inhibit people from investing in our community, because, I mean, the whole reason for these ordinances is to ask people to invest in our community in a way that we think will enhance the community. our community in a way that we think will enhance the community. And so we want to make sure that we're not doing anything to prevent people from investing in our community. So I think we really have to make sure that when we, you know, when we look at this further and further develop it, that we make sure that we're not having any of those unintended consequences. And I'd like to make sure that our staff continues to work with the stakeholders to ensure that that does not happen.
Yes, thank you. I was going to bring up the same thing. I'd kind of like to see a bit of space now between the first and the second reading, so we can make sure that a lot of those questions are answered, and that we can have some more time to go over this in detail and make sure that it fits with our vision of what we thought we wanted to do with these areas, without having negative impacts on businesses. Mr. Rossell.
Yes, I'd like to just address that point a little bit in terms of process. So it's entirely appropriate to have as much time as you need to fully understand those impacts. But the passage of this ordinance affects no property unless other steps are taken. And so Ms. Kleeman talked about, after, if, after first and second reading, assuming this is finally adopted, it's a text amendment. There is no property-zoned TOD residential, TOD commercial, TOD mixed-use. The next step would be the comprehensive plan to identify the kinds of questions you're getting at in terms of what are the characteristics of the sites that will be guided that way. The amendment of the comprehensive plan doesn't affect any particular property. So you'll have time to hear from the members of the public, and those property owners, they will weigh in to say, well, we don't want any of those TOD districts because, and give you reasons, or we'd rather be in this particular kind of district, or we'd rather be in this particular kind of district 20 years from now because we've recently made improvements to our property. But, and so after you sort through all that, you adopt amendments to your comprehensive plan, again, that does not affect any particular parcel because no parcel has been zoned. So then the conversation continues and gets very serious at the point in time when a zoning map is brought before you and parcel A is identified to be zoned a particular way. And that's where you'll have the one-on-one conversations with particular property owners about their property and the impacts on the property. And so you will have multiple opportunities to address all of this, and I think the staff has been going about it in a very methodical manner so that you do have those opportunities.
Okay, good. All right, thanks. And if I remember correctly, didn't you say one time that the way that we do it, where we amend the comprehensive plan, but we don't amend the zoning until the point of sale or development? That's kind of unusual?
Yes, many communities pre-zone, and we have not traditionally done that. We're getting fewer and fewer areas that are no longer that way, but this would be, again, another opportunity to look at it in that fashion. That would be an option, to do it that way, certainly. But if you waited until a property came forward, say, Mr. Griffith's client came forward and said they wanted to take their one-story warehouse and make it into a two-story warehouse, and you had zoned, you had planned to zone that TOD mixed-commercial, you might not have the opportunity then to do that with their application. And so it may take a little zoning to be put in place to continue that conversation, but there'll be plenty of opportunities for any of those property owners to come forward and really have a good discussion with you about the impact. Some will embrace it and say, this will spur development of my property. Others will say, I'm perfectly happy to remain as I am, and you need to then balance what your vision is for the development of the city with the private property rights and that owner's vision of their property.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Motion passes. The final public hearing is a vacation of an easement over Lot 1 Block 1 of Five Mitchell Crossing. Mr. Getzschel.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, our last public hearing, the owners of the Martin Blue apartment complex have requested a vacation of a portion of their public and utility drainage easement to accommodate the construction of a sign at the intersection of Mitchell Road and Martin Drive. Those easements were originally dedicated with the plat, original plat of Five Mitchell Crossing, and the sign will be removable from the post to allow the use of all the other remaining easements to be there due to the large number of buried utilities. So again, you recall, we oftentimes have these kind of minor vacations of easements that require a public hearing and council action, and this is related to our, you know, very nice new development, the Martin Blue apartment complexes on Mitchell Road.
Okay, and the sign that would go there, they're entitled to, in terms of the number of signs, the size of signs, is not permission for an additional sign, correct?
That is correct, Mayor. It's my understanding that their signage fits completely within what has been approved as part of their development.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Anybody from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating the portion of the public drainage and utility easements over Lot 1 Block 1, Five Mitchell Crossing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please. Well, first of all, any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukin.
Aye. Reports of councilmembers, Kathy Nelson, you had something you wanted to bring up.
Yes, for one thing, I was just given the League of Women Voters' school candidate dates for this year, which is Thursday, October 1st, 2015, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. in the evening. They're going to be at the Eden Prairie Public Library, but instead of their normal candidate forum, they're going to have a candidate fair. And they're going to try, this is new, in all of their areas, they are having their traditional candidate forum, however. The reason they're not doing it in Eden Prairie is all the other areas do not charge them for when they're having a candidate forum for that city, you know, be it councils, school board, legislators. But we are charging them at the top-tier rate for use for forums. And a year ago, they had to pay the money, and the rates that they're quoted from us were so high that they didn't have the budget for it. So I'd like to ask staff, you know, right now, they're listed as top-tier, and, you know, that's fine if they're having an annual membership meeting or a speaker of some kind or, you know, whatever. But I am concerned about the fact that you won't have a televised forum for this election because then I'd like us to look into revising our, you know, use of this room for candidate forums specific to Eden Prairie, so that they are maybe only paying for the technician and such, so that we can have a televised and online forum in the future. I think that would make a big difference to many of our races. And it may make a difference for this one, but it's set now for this. So if we could get a report back on how we could conform with other cities in not making huge charges for candidate forums, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, we could do that. I know the different tiered rates, the top tier is for private businesses or private individuals, so the fact that it's, this is a nonprofit agency, and you do have many, many nonprofit agencies that want to use public buildings, so that's another tier. And then there is a tier where if it's a city event, there is not a charge, so I can look into that. But I'm kind of puzzled by even being quoted a top-tier rate, because there's three or four different tiers.
Because it specifically lists their name and that rate online, so that's where they came to the conclusion that that's what they were.
So did they?
But they did have to pay that rate.
Previously.
Last fall.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we'll certainly look into that and bring something back.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Case.
Yeah, I'm interested in CBDG funding and also other governmental, just any funding that we currently have for Somali community service organizations. And my purpose with all of the interest in the state, looking at the Somali community, and particularly youth and services that are being supplied really around the state, but my purpose would be to really look at how we could positively incentivize, I guess I'll use the word inculcation, of community values within Somali youth. So what I'd really be interested in, if all of you concur, just to have maybe staff bring back a report at our next meeting, but I just want to know what funds are we currently expending on Somali community issues and concerns? And then, second, which recipient groups are receiving those funds? And then are there others who have needs and have made requests but have not been funded? So I just kind of want to get a ballpark picture of what we're doing currently with helping our Somali community in the city.
Okay.
Is that acceptable by all of you?
Yes, let's agree to it.
Sounds good.
Sure. A report of the Community Development Director. Julie, you're going to do that?
This is your night, Julie.
I tell ya.
You're doing great.
So I wanted to walk over here so that I could provide you with the visuals to support the conversation that we're going to have about Crossroads Center. As you'll recall, I believe it was in July, Crossroads Center was before you, asking for a PUD approval in order to do a facade remodel as well as landscaping improvements. So the drawing that you have, if I can find it here, is what was approved with those plans. As you'll note, that includes a raised parapet along the roof line. So the discussion that we're seeking a little direction from the council on this evening really lends itself to discussions previously during the work session and the design standards that the council is interested in seeing move forward, as well as the text amendments that were discussed as part of the TOD ordinance, and looking to implement or at least bring forward, for your consideration, a abbreviated or streamlined process with regard to minor revisions to development plans. So after approval of their development plan in July, the property owner put the project out to bid, the bids came back higher than expected. So they approached staff about revising the plan to reflect removal of the raised parapets. And as you can see, there is a bit of a change between the two, and I believe you have them in your packet as well for reference. But through the PUD process, the inclusion of a raised roof line or deviated roof line was something that staff worked with the applicant in order to achieve. So we are here before you this evening, seeking some direction from the council if this revision is consistent with what the council wants to see occur on-site, and/or if it is not something that they'd like to see based on what the applicant has proposed as part of the revision. And the applicant is here as well, or the developer property owner is here, if you have specific questions for them.
The original approved plan, I think, was very attractive, and I appreciate the fact that you were willing to kind of work with us to have the raised parapets and all. Could you, Julie, perhaps, or the owners, go over how this is different than the current look, whether it's just replacement of materials that were, I think it was hail damage, correct?
Members of the council, this is what the site looks like currently. As you can see, it has the brick columns along the front, and it has, I can't speak to what the material is, but I believe it's vinyl.
Metal.
Metal, okay. It's a metal front, including a sign band. So as a part of the facade remodel improvements that the applicant proposed as part of their plan in July, you can see it included adding the parapets, providing canopies. There was also the landscaping improvements that were provided as a part of that development. Now, the reason that it went through a public process in July was because they were requesting a waiver to allow an increase in the use of EPIS, because when they calculate that 75%, 25% split in construction materials, and because it is an existing structure, structurally, it wasn't able to support any addition of brick or stone or things of that sort on the front. So staff worked with them to articulate additional different details to really bring some additional definition to the building.
Okay, so the landscaping has not changed?
Madam Chair, or Madam Mayor, members of the council, no, the landscaping is not proposed to be changed from the approved plans in July. The only change the applicant is proposing is the removal of the parapets.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
They'll still have the awnings in, and the updated look, which would seem to be somewhat better. I think currently, there are some planter boxes along, in front of some of the units, are there not? Will those planter boxes or something similar remain, or were those gone?
Any other questions?
What is the, what is the distance between, like, the vertical column segments? Because I know earlier in the discussion, when we had, we were talking about design standards, we were talking about kind of that distance and different distances. We were saying between 40 and 60 feet before you had a change in the roof structure.
I would defer that question to the applicant at this point.
Do you know, do you have a rough idea, I mean, what the distance is between those segments? I'm just trying to get a feel for scale here and what our discussion was.
This is, hello, I'm Scott Nelson with DJR Architecture. The space, can you see the plan over the screen? It's a little over 60 feet between the brick sections of the building. And also, just to elaborate one thing, that the, there's a lot of slope to the site, so there's actually a step down from west to east, or step up from east to west between each of the sections. So thus, the brick really acts as a transitional material between the different sections of facade as it goes down as well.
Okay, thank you. I was just, I was, I kind of wanted to get a scale for that, because the discussion earlier was, there was a couple of different standards where you had to have a change in the roof line, and it was between 40 and 60 feet. And so I kind of wanted to see what that scale is. I like the design of the parapets, but I can understand that it does add a significant amount of cost to the project. I still think it looks better, but I think even the updated design that you came up with is certainly more attractive than the current structure, and so I'm happy that you're willing to invest in the property and update the look and make it look nicer. So I certainly don't have a problem with the updated design.
Councilmember Case.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my hands around what this line is between how much control and power we have on renovation kind of projects. Obviously, if they came in and they were going to completely redo the building, then it's a developer's agreement piece again, but we don't want to get to the point that if we somehow mandate some kind of an extensive project that suddenly people can't do, and then we get to keep what's there. I mean, there's always that wanting to improve, but I don't know what's within our domain of power and control here to it, you know, especially if we're not really incentivizing. So I mean, I would, I like the parapet, too. I'd probably even redesign a little bit more if I had my dethers, but I don't. And so if they're coming saying, hey, we're going to improve this and reinvest in the property, great. I just, I'm trying to get a feel for what's, what's normal here for us to expect in situations like this.
Well, I think the reason the staff brought this to us, just to see the change that has been made or is proposed, is because we don't like it when we've approved something, and then we see it done, and it's different.
But we're not even getting a chance to approve or deny.
Well, there's no action, yeah, that's true.
That's what I'm saying. This is a case where, in a way, someone, I'll go metaphorically out to the extreme, is coming, do you like this color of paint? I mean, it's great, we're happy about that, but I don't, this is not a redevelopment, this is, you see what I'm trying to say?
I do.
And if Julie and others, if staff are looking for us to get, just give some feedback on what do we like and not like, I don't think it has to be in a public forum, is my point.
Well, I don't know. I mean, if they're changing, I mean, to me, this is a fairly significant change.
I'm okay with this.
And I just kind of feel like...
I'm just trying to get my hands on where that line is.
Yeah, I don't want them to have to go through the whole process again of, you know, application and review by the planning commission and all that. So I'd like to save them that step, but I think the council should be informed that they want to make this change. And if we totally hated it, if all of us hated it, somebody could make a motion, just because it's not written in our packet, we could still make a motion saying, we don't like this.
And so what, though?
Well, go back to working with Julie and figuring out something they can afford that is improvement.
And Mayor Council, maybe I can add, it does piggyback on the mayor's point that there was an initial approval of this project. It's in a development agreement with an agreed-upon certain standard of which is being altered. And so it's not a matter of coming to you and saying, here's all these different projects, what do you think? This was a pre-approved project, and as the mayor said, someone could say, this is different from what I approved. So we're simply kind of getting that informal feedback, but because it isn't a development agreement, and similar to what we were talking about at workshop, the city could follow up and say that you did not build what was approved and could take action on that. I think the idea is if you are okay with that, then we can move forward and we won't follow up and say that there was a violation of your development agreement.
That almost seems like to protect the people coming in, that we would, that they would want us then to take a vote, not just to listen to us tonight, say, oh, we're kind of okay with it, and then a month from now, you know, legally not be okay with it. But I'd really like to hear what Mr. Russell has to say.
Yeah, Mr. Russell did hit us.
Well, I would just add and go back one step further than what Mr. Getchel just said. He explained why it's coming tonight, but why it came in July was, there was a development agreement on the property that said the property be developed in accordance with the plans that the council approved. And so to go from how it was approved to how they wanted to improve it required a change in the PUD because it was changing the plans, and that is the degree of control that you have over the look of the community. You are allowed to legislate aesthetics, and you do. So it was that first PUD with its plans that, when they wanted to change it, as you saw in July, you needed to weigh in. Now that they wanted to change it again, we actually did make the process more user-friendly by bringing it directly to you rather than going back through the process to the planning commission. My arm was twisted, but that's the manner in which that was done.
But to Ron's point, shouldn't we take a vote on it to protect the proponents?
Absolutely, they would, they should want that as well.
Yeah, and I also like it made very clear that we do want this kind of thing coming back, even if it's brief, because there was a long time there where they just changed, this planning staff said, okay, that's a lesser use, and so we're not going to get this. And that wasn't right. You know, it happened over and over and over again. And now, you know, if they say they're going to build this, they have to build it, and I want that to continue. I don't want us to say, well, don't bring us this stuff. I do, in a short form perhaps, but there's a whole bunch of things that we don't have in this community that went into building agreements, and don't want to go back there.
Right. Councilmember Wickstrom?
Yes, and that's exactly what I was going to say, too, Kathy, and that is, I think this is apropos. I think, given these conversations we've been having, the input that the council has had in terms of creating those standards, maybe modifying those standards, I think this really is, because it's an applied example of what we're trying, of all the thoughts that we have and the way that staff is hearing what our interpretation is of how we go forward with these standards, because I think that they're a little bit different than what they used to be in the past. And that is apropos for us to be talking about it. So I'm glad it did come back, but it came back particularly because of a procedure.
So we do need.
So I think we should cobble together a motion.
So I would move that we approve this change in the plans.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else to bring before the council?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I like the first point myself. I just have to live with the changes that have been going on in the last year and costs.
Sure.
I think it's still a big improvement.
Yes, it is. Yeah, thank you for making that stretch.
And great landscaping, too.
That will sit on the top of my list, but I'll like.
Yes, that's important to us, yeah. Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
I would move we adjourn.
I'll adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.